Excuse me, sweetie. My hands shake so bad. I know.
You'll be right here for you?
Yeah.
Where you at? Where you at?
Right here.
We're just saying you're not gonna bow out of the deck.
Oh, no. I know that's right.
It's all right. It's all right.
My chair ain't moving. I gotta get rid of my gum. I'm busy.
Okay. Okay. Also.
Remember where council got the lead? Remember Council West got the vote?
Open contact. It ain't no.
See, I leave after the vote.
See, can't say. Depending on the day and the way the wind blow. I like that better.
Get some tea.
Mm-hmm.
So how'd that happen? It got quiet all by itself? Let's do this. Good morning and welcome to the City of Chester. City Council meeting for today, Wednesday, September 24th, 2025. As always, we open with a prayer followed by the pledge. Today, the prayer will be delivered by Reverend Jonathan A. Drummond, pastor from Range Memorial Church of God in Christ in Chester. Range has been around forever, so great to be represented by you guys today. All rise.
Good morning. Everyone, please bow your heads. Most gracious and heavenly Father, we come before you today with grateful hearts, thanking you for your grace, your steadfast love that never ceases, and for your mercies that never ends. They are new every morning. Great is your faithfulness. Lord, we thank you and we ask for your presence in this meeting. I pray that you grant each council member discernment, patience, and the clarity as they deliberate on matters that affect the lives of our neighbors and fellow citizens. Help them seek justice, love, and to walk humbly in the decisions that they're about to make. Lord, bless our leaders, our workers, and every resident. Let peace and unity reign in our streets, and may this council always strive to uphold the values of integrity, compassion, and truth. Give them the wisdom to know what is right and the courage to do it. Lord, I pray for our city and our nation. We know all is not right at the moment, and we need a moral and spiritual renewal. Lord, we need a revival in the land. Help us to turn to you in repentance and faith, set our feet on the path of your righteousness and peace. We thank you for your blessings far beyond what we deserve, and we thank you for this opportunity to serve. We commit this meeting into your hands as we humbly, as we humble ourselves and acknowledge you alone as our Savior and Lord. This we pray in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Counselors Gibson, Wim.
Present.
Green.
Present.
West.
Present.
Davis.
Present.
Mayor Roots.
Present.
We have a motion to approve minutes from September 10th, 2025.
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Hearing none. Motion carries. Thank you. Public comment. Time for you guys to step to the mic if you have any public comment on agenda items only. Are you up there? Council Lady Williams to give public comment. Okay. Let's see, where are we? Old business. Council, any old business you'd like to share?
I do just want to thank everyone for coming out to the Peace, Love, and Unity Festival. It was a great, great success. A lot of families, a lot of friends came out, and the whole day was filled with entertainment and great performers, and it was a great success. Looking forward to next year, so thank you all. And thank you to our sponsors, too.
And I'd just like to thank Councilman Green and Ms. Crystal Varell, is she in here? For all of your hard work and to all the staff, public works, parks, everyone who worked on that event. And it was very successful, and I thank you for bringing us together as a community.
Thank you.
Guess it's my turn. I want to thank council for holding it down last council meeting in my absence. I did watch. You guys did fine job. Thank you. Deputy Mayor for taking the lead there. Here we go. Look up at the screen, you guys. We're going to talk about something that was a part of last council meeting but didn't get much discussion. It was the approval of Resolution 99. The, in very simple terms, the trash contract, the new trash contract that we'll be entering into in the year 2026. As you know, Mascaro is our current trash vendor. The contract for them ends December 31st, 2025. We put this out to bid earlier this year in order to have the bids back, to know how much we'd be paying, to incorporate it into next year's budget. When the bids came in, we will be... You're gonna see a new trash truck come around next year, so it won't be the company we've had for the last few years, that being Mascaro. And I'm looking for the name. I never say it right. What's the name of the new company? Cas- Con-
Casella. Casella.
Casella.
It's Casella doing business as Waste Industries of Delaware.
Okay. Casella, because I've seen both. Waste Industries of Delaware, as it's written there. It's a $1.65 million contract for year one. So there's some numbers you need to... We want you to understand as to why this has... It's gonna make a pretty big impact. So the first number you see, compare this year. If... This is the one that's pretty tricky to me. For what we pay this year to Mascaro, if the contract was in place with the new bidder, the new company, Waste... What's it called again? Waste? Here it is. Waste Industries of Delaware. We would be saving $350,000. Next year, the city will be saving $1.9 million less than the current provider's bid. Basically, what's that saying is, they both did bid for the contract. Mascaro's price to, you know, continue to do work in Chester was nearly $2 million more than what Waste Industries of Delaware offered or proposed. $2 million is a lot of money. And to be quite transparent, it even had us scratching our heads because we knew or we were anticipating that there would be a very large increase in what we were paying regardless of whatever vendor was chosen. So Waste Industries came in with a price, if you will, that was less than what we were currently paying, which was phenomenal. We brought them in just to make sure they read the bid right, or the request for proposal right. We went through every line of it, and they guaranteed us that they could deliver exactly what we were asking for. So if they can deliver everything that we're asking for for $350,000 less than we were already paying, they became the lowest, most responsible bidder. Now, that's yet to be seen. They're not on the streets yet, and they'll be held accountable to the contract. And if they can't deliver, there are some... There's some things in place to make sure that it is delivered. Over the next five years, the savings, you know, if you multiply 2 million times 5, you get to $10 million. So this contract with the new trash vendor is going to save the city $10 million. What do you get? What do you get in addition to the savings? New recycling bins. They insist on providing 65-gallon, the same size of the orange and black trash cans that we handed out a couple years ago. They'll be delivering to every household that they pick up a probably blue-colored recycling bin. They're gonna be picking up recycling on the same day that they're picking up trash. So it's not like now where Wednesday Mascaro goes through the city to pick up recycling. The new company will be picking up recycling the same day that they're picking up trash in your neighborhood. This should encourage people who want to recycle to recycle. Two bulk items will be picked up per week as opposed to the one that we currently have. They're gonna be doing the leaf pickups for us, so you know, you gather your leaves, you put them in the proper container, bag, put them up. They will pick them up as well as in the spring when you're clearing out for, you know, doing your spring, uh, spring cleaning and getting your yards ready for spring. And they're gonna also offer two annual drop-off events. That's for recycling and electronic waste. That's something that we weren't getting from our current vendor. So it's an almost-too-good-to-be-true scenario. Like I said, we were preparing and actually dreading all the estimates that we were getting that the increase in price would be pretty substantial. Of course, we would have to roll those increases out to you and your trash fees, you know, every year. I will tell you right now, there will not be an increase in trash fees next year because of the savings. And in all fairness, they do have an escalator. I think it's 3% a year, the price will go up, so we actually know how much more it's going to cost us each of these next five years. So I just wanted to provide that detail because it's really important. This wasn't just a normal, run-of-the-mill request for proposal, pick the lowest bidder and move on. They were substantially lower, and they're gonna be providing us greater service, so we're excited about that, so much so that I took this moment to share with you. Before my solicitor beats me up, we have had, I think, as many as three executive sessions between the last council meeting and this one. Two of them were personnel issues and one of them were in the legal realm. So that's old business. Any new business? No new business? All right, so we're gonna pass it down to our beloved clerk. Take it away.
Resolution: Whereas Congress approved the American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 and appropriated American Rescue Plan, known as ARP, funds to be administered through the Department of Housing and Urban Development's Home Investment Partnerships Program. And whereas home-ARP funds are to be used to perform the following four activities for qualifying individuals and families who are homeless, at risk of homelessness, or in other vulnerable populations. Development in support of affordable housing, tenant-based rental assistance, known as T-B-R-A, provision of supportive services, and acquisition and development of non-congregate shelter units. And whereas the Department of Housing and Urban Development has allocated a total of $1,320,271 in home-ARP funds to the City of Chester. And whereas the Chester Economic Development Authority, known as CETA, as administrative agent of the city, issued a request for proposals for the development of home-ARP rental housing. And whereas, based on the evaluation of proposals received on August 8th, 2025, CETA has recommended that the city consider allocating home-ARP funds in an amount not to exceed $849,852 to Liberty Housing Development Corporation for the Eileen and Shaun's Place Rental Housing Development at 1100 through 1130 Morton Avenue. Now, therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the allocation of home-ARP funds in an amount not to exceed $849,852 to Liberty Housing Development Corporation for the Eileen and Shaun's Place Rental Housing Development at 1100 through 1130 Morton Avenue, Chester, PA.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Wim.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution: Whereas on June 25th, 2025, Chester City Council approved entering into an agreement with LSN CMNE LLC, otherwise known as LSN Contractors and Construction Managers, 8030 Thoron Avenue, second floor, Philadelphia, PA, 19150, to provide construction services for the Phase 1 Chester Business District Facade Beautification and/or Improvement Program American Rescue Plan Act, known as ARPA, Project Number 37, in an amount not to exceed $237,946.19. And whereas, three properties were selected: 407 Avenue of the States, 517 through 519 Avenue of the States, and 531 through 533 Avenue of the States. And whereas, on August 13th, 2025, Chester City Council approved an amendment for a change in the scope of work to remove 531 through 533 Avenue of the States from the original scope of work, reducing the agreement price by $95,060.80 for a new project amount of $142,885.39. And whereas, due to a discrepancy between the drawings and bid specifications, there is a need for additional services to be added to the scope of work for the remaining properties. Now, therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby approve the attached change order number one for LSN CMNE LLC, otherwise known as LSN Contractors and Construction Managers, to furnish and install two new Pella doors at 407 Avenue of the States and prepare and install epoxy flooring at 517 Avenue of the States for a change order amount of $10,379.32 and that all work performed pursuant to said change order shall be in accordance with the specifications and to the satisfaction of the city. Further, it does hereby authorize the mayor to execute the attached change order number one for and on behalf of the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I'll make a comment. This is part of our facade improvement program, which were taking place right behind us. The whole effort is to help beautify some of the facades or the outsides of the businesses on the Avenue of the States between the 400 and 600 block. Everyone was invited to apply. It came down to five properties, and I just want you to know where it says, "Remove 531 and 533." We didn't remove them from the approval list. They removed themselves. They didn't want our money. Uh, I want to thank the contractor for looking at the specs with an eagle eye, realizing that one of the ones that was approved, the doors were missing in the, in the specs and also the epoxy flooring, so thank you for making that particular property look even better. I mean, obviously, you saw that it needed to be included. I say "you" because here's our contractor right here who's gonna do it, so thank you for that. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Wim.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution: A resolution of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, granting preliminary and/or final approval to the City of Chester for its subdivision plan for Zero West Second Street, Chester, PA.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions or comments? I do have a question or comment. Just in the interest of time and brevity, I was expecting you to read this whole thing, but we have had that conversation that oftentimes, all this does not have to be read out loud because we're making it available to all of you, so that's why I think it all took us by surprise when two-
I could've read on if you wanted me to.
Oh, no. We have had that conversation.
Okay.
We made that change that we weren't gonna read.
Okay, I just-
No, but thank you. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Wim.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution-
Hold on.
Sure.
It will also apply to this one.
Oh, yeah. Resolution: Whereas Article 503.08 entitled Charges for Violations, Towing, and Storage of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester authorizes the Chester City Council to establish rates for towing of vehicles and storage costs for said vehicles by resolution, and Chester City Council desires to update the towing and storage rates. Now, therefore, the council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby set the rates for the towing and storage of vehicles effective January 1st, 2026, as stated in the chart to this resolution. Further, any event, any provision, section, sentence, clause, or part of this resolution shall be held to be invalid. Such invalidity shall not affect or impair any remaining provisions, section, sentence, clause, or part of this resolution, it being the intent of this Chester City Council that the remainder of the resolution shall remain in full force and affect any parts of this resolution which are inconsistent herewith are repealed hereby.
So moved.
Second.
Any comments or questions? So the part that's missing that she read is the, the chart there. As you can see on the screen, this is sort of part one of putting together our contract for new towing in the city. And one of the things that we wanted to address with this resolution going forward to the contract given, going forward to how you're gonna be priced if you have to retrieve a towed car, is that we want you to know what the price is upfront. So it's sort of the effort of putting all the fees involved in that. In the past, the only thing that we have listed would be the tow fee. Is that right, Chief? Yeah, we would list the tow fee of X amount of dollars, but then you go pick up your vehicle, and it's three, four times that. So what we wanted to do is add not only the tow fee, but, you know, everything else, like, is it in here, storage fee? Depending on what size it is, we want you to know right upfront what you're going to pay when you go pick up your car, so that's the whole purpose of getting council to consider approving this part so that it's included in the bid spec. Madam Clerk.
Counselors Gibson, Wim.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Resolution: Whereas the Commonwealth Court of Pennsylvania has issued an order outlining their approved composition- has issued an order outlining their approved composition of the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester Board. And whereas, the city desires to comply with the court's order. And whereas, the court has ordered the board shall consist of five members with staggered terms as follows. Joan Neal. Her term ends October 28th, 2025. Livia Smith. Her term ends October 28th, 2026. William Riley. His term will end October 28th, 2027. John Shelton. His term will end October 28th, 2028. And whereas, a vacancy current exists on the board with a term to expire the first Monday in January 2029. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that it does hereby appoint Zeyman Amad as a member of the Stormwater Authority of the City of Chester Board with a term to expire January 1st, 2029.
So moved.
Second.
Any questions, comments? Madam Clerk.
Councilors Gibson, Whams.
Yes.
Green.
Yes.
West.
Yes.
Davis.
Yes.
Mayor Roots.
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
You're welcome.
We're not listing any reports today. Anyone? Reports? The directors? None. Okay. So we're going to go into some presentations. We are going to start with Ms. Haley on a very important event that's coming up this weekend that everybody in the city can participate in. Well, at least you didn't fall asleep.
Yeah. Good morning, everyone. Good morning, council. We are running, the Block Captain Program is running a citywide Chester Pride Community Cleanup this Saturday. We will have, we have 12 organized locations, and then a couple have popped up around the city from people who have just registered and said they're cleaning up their own block, which is entirely the goal. So we're very, very excited. Afterwards, we are wrapping up with a celebration at Sun Village Park. There will be free water ice and pretzels, a couple of community vendors as well. We'll have some moon bounces for the kids, so please come out. All supplies will be provided at all of the locations listed, as well as, you know, attendance to the party afterwards is free as well. We'll be handing out a couple of awards at the celebration as well. So I just wanted to give those people a quick shout out because they've really made the Block Captain Program a success this year. So we have our Block Captain of the Year, Ms. Montora Gail E. Johnson. Mr. Warner Bell, who has been our conversation starter, attended every single meeting that we've had here in City Hall every month. He's always got supportive things and great ideas for the community. I wanted to thank Chris Lamb with TNT Disposal. They've donated a couple of dumpsters. They will be providing our dumpsters at a few of the sites here and also donated another one for there. He's our Community Partner of the Year. And our Volunteer of the Year is going to the Jawala Scouts, who have been excellent and provided a lot of, I would say manpower, but it's really more child power at our cleanups. They come out with a big group of kids and really have made a difference in the community. Actually, there are signs up now at all of these locations that designate them a cleanup spot for the cleanup. So keep an eye out around the city, but also feel free to just do your own block. So I hope to see you guys there. And yeah, really exciting, so. Thank you.
Really proud of what the Block Captains are shaping up to be. There's always room to represent your block or blocks if you want to. Just get in touch with the Block Captain Committee. And it just reminds me, last weekend, we had a lot of Villanova students in the City of Chester doing various cleanup events. It was organized through the county. So County Council President Monica Taylor called me and asked if we could open the front doors of City Hall Saturday for the help that some of the students were doing at the 1724 Courthouse. There was another group of students in Crozier Park and Crozier, yes, Crozier Park and more. So it's great when the college students who are required to do community service are directed our way for, you know, to gain their hours to get the service. So we were really appreciative of all that, all that help from the outside, if you will. Another presentation. We have some real visitors in here today, but they're not real visitors. They're from the Philadelphia Union Foundation. So you guys come on up and present what is one of the most gracious gifts that is so prepackaged that all we have to do, by and large, is say yes.
I'm done. Thank you very much, council and Mayor Roots, for welcoming us here today. I'm Melissa Radu. I'm the Executive Director of the Philadelphia Union Foundation. And everything that we do within the foundation is about providing opportunity and access for our community. We do a variety of things, and I would be remiss if I didn't take this opportunity to also just kind of share overall what we do within the foundation. So we have four major initiatives. One of them is our IM Project. And our IM Project is career readiness. We work directly with Chester Charter Scholars Academy, and we help high school-age young people basically find their way and create opportunities for them that they would have never had before through learning explorers, inspirational speakers, and mentorship, which is what the IM Project stands for. Another initiative that we have is Chester Soccer. And Chester Soccer is made up of the High School Chester Program that we oversee, fund, and develop here in Chester. We were fortunate to play our first PIA season last fall. If anybody wants to come out, the boys have a high school game tomorrow at the Sportsplex at 3:45. They played away for the first four games, and now they're back at home for four games. And we're fortunate to have those games right at the Wispus Bank Sportsplex. The other component of Chester Soccer is our Chester Union, which is a no-cost soccer club that we started in November of 2023. It's ages five through high school, you know, 18, gives the kids an opportunity to play on a team. Head First is our other initiative. It's our mental health initiative, and that one is broader. And we do in-person education. We have a fitness forum, and we have myheadfirst.org, which gives players, parents, and coaches an opportunity to find the tools that they need to help them through mental health. And then the one that's brought me here today is our Safe Spaces, which is in conjunction with our Chester Soccer. You have a soccer team, you need a place to play, right? And we all know that opportunity to be able to play the beautiful game, you need a pitch to do it. So we have, over the course of many years, have been able to build them in a variety of places across Philly. But more, at the beginning of this year, we teamed up with Love Football. Love Football builds mini pitches across the globe. I'm joined here by one of their colleagues, one of my colleagues, and we've partnered with them. And through that partnership, we've been able to fundraise and develop this project that will be at Seventh and Penn. Right now, there's a soccer pitch there, three basketball courts. You can see the renderings right here that we've kind of developed. We have, we're going to basically reinvent that space. So there'll be lights, solar lights, that will be a part of it. There will be, the three basketball courts will be, murals will be put on those courts. They'll be resurfaced. The whole entire project that we've, is a $411,000 investment. We've been fortunate to raise that money. The money will come from the Philadelphia Union Foundation as well as the Kevin Durant Foundation, private funders, and the Ron Jaworski Foundation. So we're really excited to be able to bring this to you. We've done a lot of hard work to be able to raise that money. We're hoping that we can gain the support to then put some shovels in the ground and bring it to life. In addition to this field, we're not really done. Part of our connection with Love Football is we're looking at building 26 fields by 2030 in the Philadelphia area. But we wanted to make sure that, we obviously started right here in Chester, gives our place for our Chester Union kids. You can see on this one illustration here, we're looking at building corridors. So a corridor in Chester, three or four fields in Chester, and then three or four fields in Kensington, South Philly, North Philly. And then we're going to develop a tournament that we get the best of Chester, the best of Kensington, play that tournament, and we'll probably be back in front of you to share more about that as it gets closer to the World Cup because we have a lot going on. Can I yield any questions?
I just want people to know. She kept saying, "Pitch, pitch, pitch." For those of you who aren't familiar with the game of soccer, their field is called a pitch.
Yes. So basically, a pitch is what you see right here on this rendering, which is a small-sided mini pitch, we call them. A full pitch would be 11 versus 11.
Look, I just want to say thank you and your board. Thank you guys so much for coming here. And I also want to recognize former Councilman Will Morgan, who was here. He is also on the Board of Directors for the Philadelphia Union. And he reached out to me probably about a few weeks ago and said, "Listen, we got some money, and we want to redo Seventh Street Courts." And I'm like, "Let's do it." So I put a meeting together and got all the players involved at the table, and here we are today. So I'm so grateful for you guys, the Love Football, and all of Kevin Durant and all of the partners that's going to be responsible for this and raising the money and putting this together. And this is what we need more of. And so I am grateful that you guys are here, and thank you for taking your time out of your busy schedules to be here with us today. So thank you, and keep investing in Chester. Keep putting money into Chester, and keep making Chester beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. I know those are yours, but can you make copies for us?
Yes.
Thanks.
Yes.
Appreciate it.
Absolutely. Is that it?
That's it. I'm just excited that Ron Jaworski and Kevin Durant will know Chester's name.
Yes.
That is so huge. Thank you so much. That is so gracious. That is so exciting. I mean, for a town that is not, you know, a soccer town. You guys, the Philadelphia Union has been here 15 years, and too often, you know, we hear that line, "Oh, you know, they're not doing anything for us." Well, hopefully, this will be the start of changing that narrative. And to think that you're going to do three or four here in Chester. I mean, I'm just trying to think. We only have like three or four big parks, so they're going to cover the whole city. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much. This next presentation that will be given by my special assistant, Justin Tibbles, is something that he's been working hard on in more than one way. Not only has he been sort of the focal point here in Chester to make this thing happen in Chester, he's actually going to participate. So God bless you for running your eight and 10 miles of training because I'm only going to be at the finish line acting like I did the whole, I got to work up a sweat somehow, but I'm going to look like I ran 10 miles. But please, explain what the Delco 10-miler is, the fact that it's the first of its kind, the fact that it started with a vision that was like this and blossomed into, they had to cut it off.
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, so my name's Justin Tibbles, Special Assistant to the Mayor. And Delaware County wanted to do an inaugural 10-mile race that's going to start up at Rose Tree Park, work its way down Providence, and come kind of wind its way through Chester and end down at Union Yard Stadium where there will be a celebration. So this is going to be the first year that they're doing it. It's kind of a test run. And part of the idea of this run is to showcase some of the county to visitors who might come in and be interested in race. Philly has some big races, attracts a lot of people, that showcases the city of Philadelphia from all over. And it's also fun for residents to participate as well. So Delaware County wants to have its own race, and a large chunk of it is going to be right through the City of Chester. So I did sign up for it because it's pretty much going to run right by my house. So I said I might as well get out there and be a part of it. I'm here, and Chief, you can hit the next slide. This is going to be happening this coming Sunday, September 28th. And the race is going to be in the morning. So I am making this announcement to kind of give a heads up about some of the impact that this race will have on Sunday morning. No matter when it happens, you know, there will be an impact on traffic. I think the county collectively decided that they wanted to try it out on this Sunday. So the race itself is going to start at 8:00 AM, like I said, up at Rose Tree Park and come down Providence. You have to run at least a 15-minute mile, which means it'll be over by 10:30 AM down at the stadium. So realistically, in the City of Chester, which is kind of the second half of the race, the last half of the race, from about 8:30 AM to 10:30 AM is when we can expect a lot of the road closures to take place. So what you're going to see during this time, the county has over 300 volunteers. We have also made a big effort in the city across multiple departments, including police, fire, public works, and parks, that will partner with other municipalities and the county and all of the volunteers to try to help with street closures, water stations, and things like that. So you'll see people all over, all along the race route. So I'm just going to read off kind of the path of this route through the city. Like I said, it's going to start, it's going to enter the City of Chester coming down Providence Road. Once you get next to Widener, 19th Street, it'll take a left there and then a right pretty much immediately down Walnut. So that'll be running right past Widener. And then at East 14th Street, it'll take a left, which again is pretty much running through Widener University. Take a right onto Melrose, across the bridge over 95. Take another right onto Morton Avenue. It'll go down to East 5th Street, where they'll again take a right and run by the Charter School. They'll run right through downtown here over to Penn Street, where they'll take a left down to Third. And then take a right onto Third, go all the way to Flower Street, And then take a right onto Third, go all the way to Flower Street, which is like right where the bridge is. They'll head up Flower onto Fourth Street and actually run past the bridge and sort of do a loop. So it'll loop back at Ward Street, back down Third. And then when they hit Rainey, they'll cross 291 at Rainey Street and end at Union Yards. So as you can see, there's going to be a lot of intersections impacted. 291 is going to be cut in half for those couple hours. You'll still be able to head in either direction off of 291, but you won't be able to cross at Rainey Street. So I think this may have the largest impact on, you know, churchgoers and maybe religious services that may be happening in the morning. So please plan accordingly. Again, the county and the city understands that, you know, this is an inconvenience for some of us. So thank you for your patience and cooperation. But hopefully this will be a fun event for the city. Like the mayor said, they were expecting maybe 500 people to sign up. They finally had to cap it at 1,200. So there will be 1,200 people from across the county and outside of the county doing this run. And again, another 300 plus people volunteering. So pretty, pretty exciting for an inaugural run. And we'll learn a lot from this and see what this could become in the future.
Give that mic to Ms. Bender, please. She has a question. You need a mic?
While they're taking her mic. Now, is people are only allowed to run? Because I got walking in me, ain't got no running in me. Can they walk this?
So for this race, because they didn't want it to take too long and like be, have too much of an impact, they made the cutoff, you have to do at least a 15 minute mile pace. So
You've been training.
I have been training. I'm not fast, but I think I'll finish. So, yeah.
So I see the street, I got information that the street will be blocked off on Third. I wasn't aware that the street was going to be blocked off on Fourth, where Ward is. And I didn't realize, we're just trying to find a way out. We have funerals Saturday. And if Third and Fourth are black, I'm kind of stuck in between that time.
Yeah, I think we'd be happy to talk more to try to figure this out. I will say, I know that part of the plan is, you know, if there are breaks in the runners, they'll try to let some cars through, you know, if there are gaps between runners so that it's not completely blocked off. But again, you know, I don't know how that's exactly going to pan out. But we can talk more and try to figure out the logistics of that.
Kim, you said Saturday. This is Sunday.
Oh, you said on Saturday? Oh, okay. Good catch, Councilman.
You're welcome.
And Chief, if you can hit the next slide too, I think. Also, Crystal Burrell, our Parks and Rec Coordinator, asked me to make a quick announcement. The city is planning a Halloween trunk or treat for Friday, October 31st Halloween. It's going to happen right here in the Chester City Hall parking lot. But she specifically asked me to invite anyone who may want to, you know, bring a vehicle down and have a trunk with, you know, decorations and candy and whatnot. Please sign up so that we can have a really nice trunk or treat activity for kids on Halloween. Thank you.
All right. So let me add to that. There will be a trunk or treat right here in the City Hall parking lot. But at the same time, there will be a trunk or treat at the police station right on Seventh Street. So what I'm going to try to coordinate with our business community here, because they usually do something as well. The businesses will, you know, stay open a little later that night and give out candy. It would be really cool if we can make that corridor from our parking lot up Avenue of the States and hit the businesses and, you know, have another experience up at the police station. Right now, we're definitely going to go police station and parking lot here. But stay tuned. It could very well include between both of those locations our businesses in downtown. Lisa Dennis, please, where's, there she is. Lisa Dennis is the head of our chap, Police Chaplain Corps. And she and I talk often. She has educated me on the role and the importance of chaplains because I will say it and I'll say it again. When I took the role as mayor, I always wondered why there were so many chaplains here in the city of Chester. And I said, man, I don't, I don't understand why we don't have one or two. So thanks to her insistent education, I will say now that we cannot have enough. She is phenomenal at leading that group. She's very well trained, very well qualified. And every time we sit down, I learn more. One of the things that we're, that has been a test for her and the chaplain corps most recently, as so much has been impacted at the closing of our hospital, Crozier Hospital, it's impacted the chaplains as well. They're used to coming to Crozier Hospital and providing their services. Now they may have to follow an ambulance to Delaware or to Philadelphia or to Riddle. And she's found ways to work that out. So my hat's off to you. She also brings to my attention a list of annual recognition events that she hosts, she has, which are very important. And that's what she's here to present today. The floor is yours.
Good morning, Mayor and Council and City of Chester residents and friends and guests. Today, as the mayor eloquently stated, that we're here today in recognition of a citywide Day of Remembrance. Our acknowledgements for 2025. Many of you have picked up a packet or a paper and it has the colors that represent losses of different types of losses. I want to say many years ago, because most people know that I'm 27, but and 202012, a group of concerned citizens gathered together. And the question was, what is the impact of grief on children? And so as that conversation really began to develop, they began to think about the impact on their own lives. And those groups, that group of individuals began to put things together and called ourself the Chester Buried Project. Our mission is to educate, motivate, and advocate for social change regarding addressing grief in our community and find various ways that we can effectively heal and be whole after the impact of loss of any kind. If I was in a different setting, I would say, turn to your neighbor, say any kind. And as a result of that, it made us begin to think that even in your lifetime, there are certain things that you don't want to think about. But many people have not thought about the impact of our losses over a lifetime. Many people have not thought, just because we as people, we're resilient. And we, some things we don't want to think about, but there are things that happen and people are suffering in silence. I'm going to ask, we have Reverend Hilda Campbell, Reverend Robert Tate, and Chaplain Amanda Johnson. I'm going to ask if Reverend Tate would give the council members a battery operator candle. I'm going to ask if Reverend Campbell, she's holding up the balloons that represent, if you need a copy and it's on the, on the monitor, each color represents the type of losses. Orange, gun violence. Purple, domestic violence. Red, suicide. Dark blue, COVID. Yellow, cancer. White, missing person. Light yellow, natural causes. Light pink and blue, miscarriages. Green, veterans or medical malpractice. Black, incarcerated, will never walk out of jail or police involved death. The list is not inclusive, or there's an extensive, but these are the major ones that we have. And thank you for bringing that to our attention. What I want to do at this point, what I want to do at this point, because again, pain is pain and that's what grief means. And so we do have a lot of folks here and we have resources that have been made available to us to have another example of why we need assistance across the city. And we would like to acknowledge the work that Patricia Tripoli de Miranda does. We also, Susan Dennis is here. Reverend Ronald Hughes, Dr. Taslin Morales, Ms. Sheila Kelly, Nadine Bratcher, Byron Bratcher, Reverend Belinda Boyer. There are also organizations who have partnered with us. St. Daniels, United Methodist Church, Home Point Ministries have been the past hosts of various activities that we've had. Heating God's Call, the Chester Chaplains Corps, Camp Encouragement, Chester Emir, Every Murder Is Real, Through the Word Bible Fellowship Ministries, Murphy AMing Church, and now is Murphy Asbury Church. And then we have other folks from around the county who have partnered with us. Lynwood Heights United Methodist Church, Cornerstone Christian Ministries, Calvary Baptist Church, St. Luke CC Church, New Jerusalem Church of Chester, Community Baptist Church, Chester Senior Center, St. Mark CC Church, New Mount Olive Baptist Church in Wilmington, Delaware, Victory Temple Community Church. And the list can go on and on. But when we begin to work together across communities, even across the bridge, I believe in healing and community. I know that many of us in this room, in this space, we are even, we step outside of our comfort zone because all of us have been touched personally by some type of loss. I'm going to ask, where does Reverend Campbell, where, oh. Okay, all right. That's okay. We are, we are flexible. We are flexible. Does everyone, and this is not, you don't have to participate in it, but I believe that everyone deserves to be honored and recognized. No matter what the event is, that's why an individual was called a loved one. Loved by someone. In our humanness, sometimes we need to be able to acknowledge that this is someone's son. This is someone's brother, someone's mother, someone, someone love this person. Where's Justin? If you could, on your, if you have a cell phone, we're not going to, we're not going to take a long time. Everyone, do you all have your candle? Okay. We're just going to dim the lights a little bit. If you have a cell phone, and we didn't have enough candles for everyone. But if you have your cell phone, we asked that you would just turn your light on. We just asked that you turn your light on. And this, across the country, this is National Day of Remembrance. Turn your cell phone on. I promise you that this is not something that, is something to bring a light or to spark a light. I wrote a poem in 2021. "A candle was lit today for someone we love. A candle was lit because they've gone above. On to be with the angels on the other side of the rainbow. The candle was lit to keep their memory alive. The candle is lit to feel peace and comfort inside. A candle is lit in celebration of your life. A candle is lit in reflection of you." Thank you. The candle, in terms of us, it inspires us to continue to do what we're able to do while we're able to do it. Please don't make me repeat that again. But there's something inside of us that is lit that will allow us to continue to stand on the shoulders of the men and women who have allowed us to do what we're able to do today. And so I want to thank the residents and the community for coming together when we need to come together and to do the things that we need to do. Your resilience, your resilience has not gone unnoticed. But I believe that with God, we can do everything and anything that we need to do to do and make this world a better place. After we leave here, if you want to, we're going to go outside and we will release the balloons as a representation of everyone who's connected with everyone across this land. God bless you.
Okay, don't go anywhere. But you can applaud. Mayor and Council has prepared a proclamation in honor of the Citywide Day of Remembrance. A proclamation is not a citation, is not a letter of condolence. It, a proclamation proclaims something. So what we're proclaiming today is that today is a citywide Day of Remembrance. Whereas the death of loved ones is and continues to be a traumatic experience for people in the city of Chester, Pennsylvania, particularly for those who have lost children to homicide. And families of the city are grieving and in need of initiating the healing process to release from the pain of these losses. There exists a network of organizations and individuals working across the city of Chester to address grief in our community so that we may find hope and healing. The governing body of the city acknowledges and validates the hurt of the residents and supports the entities that educate, motivate, and advocate for the healing of our community. The designation of a citywide Day of Remembrance provides an opportunity for the people of Chester to pay homage, personify the memories of those, the memories of their loved ones, and to acknowledge the impact of such losses on the surviving families. Now therefore, I, Mayor Stefan Roots, and the council members of the city of Chester do hereby proclaim September 24th, 2025, the Citywide Day of Remembrance, printed today, signed by all of us. Come on up to receive it. Have to admit, I got a little nervous when we turned the lights out. Because in the past, it would take forever for them to warm up and turn back on. And one of the things that's really important to me in this city, and I'm going to repeat it because, thank you so much. Because it's important. I'm all about lights, like brightening up the space. So it's kind of hard to notice, but City Hall has been brightened up considerably. From the conference rooms to the hallways, to the lobby area. I always say that if you want to bring attention to something, just put, shine a light on it. Times Square wouldn't be Times Square without lights. The Vegas Strip wouldn't be the Vegas Strip without lights. There was someone who mentioned on Facebook yesterday that there's some lights in downtown Chester that aren't working. And he's telling the truth. He has brought it to our attention. And it is in the hands of our Public Works Department and the electricians assigned to fix them. When you see a light bulb out, please report it. Usually it's a matter of, or a street light out, usually it's a matter of just changing the bulb. But when you have a string of lights that are out in a row, it's usually an electrical problem somewhere. You know, once you identify what the electrical problem is, sometimes it's an easy fix. Sometimes it's a hard fix. Sometimes it's an expensive fix. So number one, please report any light in the city that you see out. Once reported, you know, we get right on that. Everyone would like every issue to be resolved in an instant. In some cases, that just can't happen. Before we go to public comment, and in the interest of time, and I guess proper protocol, I want to introduce, and this is going to be a real surprise to him, introduce to you the newest board member of the Stormwater Authority of Chester, Mr. Zaman Ahmed. Come to the mic, say hi. I just want you to know that he's, his bloodline is in this very space. His father was a former councilman, Monir Ahmed. If any of you guys knew him, he will introduce himself, maybe share a little of his qualifications. And what do you look forward to as being the newest board member on the Stormwater Authority?
Good morning, everyone. And good morning, Mayor, Mr. Mayor, and the governing city council members. I have been living in Chester my whole life. And I've also been on my father's coattail his entire governing career. So I have worked in wastewater for 18 years. And I've worked with basically sewer maintenance and stormwater maintainers for 18 years. So I hope that I can bring some contributing factors to the Stormwater Authority. I appreciate, you know, your consideration for my involvement in the Chester Stormwater Authority. And yeah, I recognize a lot of faces here. I just, I'm just glad to be here pretty much. And thank you all for having me.
All right, very good. Thank you.
Thank you and congratulations. Welcome aboard.
And it's time for public comment. We have, just so you guys know, we got a whole 10 signed up. Bridget Flynn, let's start with Ms. Bridget. And her friend.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Today's the first opportunity that I've been able to get here. I've already spoke with Commissioner Blackwell regarding some issues that I'm having around my neighborhood. There's a few other things that I need to address. 908 Upland Street, it is a city-owned lot that is attached to my neighbor's house. Anytime the Streets Department is out mowing, I have to tell them to mow that lot. It should not be my responsibility to tell them to mow their own lot. It has not been mowed in over a month. The weeds are now taller than her steps. Why isn't it on the regular list when they're doing one side of John Street? Why aren't they doing the other side? The other issue is I have reached out to, I forget what his name is, Mr. Aaron regarding some code violations I believe are going on at another neighbor's house. No one has gotten back to me. I'm kind of the person that the neighbors come to because they know that I open my mouth and I get things done. So if I'm coming down here, I'm frustrated. Right, Mr. Alexander? He knows if I'm walking in the building, that I've tried to do everything I can on my own and it's not getting done. We need help.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Livia Smith.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I wanna say thank you for making the appointment that was needed for the Stormwater Authority. And I hope that you will make sure we get the proper papers so that way we can bring on the new board member. And he will not be, you know, without getting oriented into the process. So make sure you send the proper papers over to the Stormwater Authority.
Let's make sure we know what those proper papers are. I see him taking that note, thank you. Mr. Brown Williams.
Good morning, Phil.
Good morning. Good to see you.
How y'all doing, City Council and Mayor? Well, I stopped by this morning to speak on behalf, the first thing. I thought y'all, y'all didn't have nothing to do with stormwater. I don't hear y'all bringing that up 10 times in years this morning. That we used to have to mount now. Another thing, I'd like to know, do you have manual class with these cops and stuff? I'd like to know, because these cops doing things, it's on real.
I'm sorry, what was, I missed the question there.
These cops doing things.
No, no, go back. Do we have what with the cops? Trainings?
Training. And do y'all take them and have class with them? Because they can have a home problem and bring it to the streets. I had seen that going on at the job where I used to work on. People have a problem at home and bring it to the job. So I just ask you a question now, it's up to you to answer. Another thing, sudden in the past, young boy from Chester get killed on the football field. Coaching. It don't make no sense what's going on in this world today. Another thing, the cops come to my house and whip my grandson to death. And I beg them, I said, boy, don't you shoot that boy. If you listen to the thing, I actually bring, call the mayor, the sergeant, whoever he is, and call the chief. They tell me they don't have to do that. So I like to know, and another thing I like to know, when I come through the city sometime, like I be tired. You ain't got a bench over there to sit down on no more. Something wrong in this city. You ain't got a bench to sit on? How if you get a servant over there across the street from the stove, we gonna sit down and eat there? They ain't got no, they ain't got no seat inside their little restaurant. We got, we need a lot of things around Chester, yeah. Whole lot of things. And it not, it not coming up. Look like everything falling down the limb, still are going up. You go down on, on Wilson Street, Matra Lane in the alley, Dresser Lane on the side of the street. Ain't y'all got people still working for the city? Why they ain't picking them up? You, you hire somebody with concern about the city. See, a lot of these fellows, y'all got on, y'all not concerned about the city. Because years ago, like back down my house, them trees wouldn't have been down on that railroad track. I and all them people been there cutting down. That's enough for me.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. Your first question does warrant an answer. What do we have to do with the Stormwater Authority? It was an authority created out of the Chester City Government. And our role and our only role with, with, with the Chester Stormwater Authority is appointing board members. So that's what you witnessed today. Anita Carrington. Last name is Robinson, 30, I mean 1037 address.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm back again.
Well, welcome back. We love repeat visitors.
The reason why I'm back on 1100 Rock on Morton Avenue. It's a field right across the street from me. And the hill is so tall and the grass, you can't even see over there on Chestnut Street. Me and my neighbor right here the other day went alongside outside walk and picked up all this trash that people come down Morton Avenue and just throw it. Just, just throw it. Then y'all tell me they building another building down the alley at 1100 to 1130. We don't know nothing about this. Nothing. Nobody explain nothing to us. They don't walk around and knock on the door and say, we doing this and we doing that. And I don't think it's fair. I really don't. And then you don't give no answer. Now, you told me you was gonna look into the lot across the street to find out who the owner that owns it to cut that grass. We still don't have no result. It's been about three weeks since I've been over here. Nobody came over and cut that grass. The guy that used to own it, he has cancer, so he sold it. But nobody comes around and cut that grass. And I don't think it's fair because I got cited $50 for vines that wasn't even on my fence in my backyard. He came, counted, told me, oh, I'm so sorry, it's the wrong house. And I didn't think that was fair to admit.
All right. Victor. Sure, please. Ms. Anita Carrington.
Hello, good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
Um, everybody know who I am. Something needs to happen about hit and run victims. Like something should be in play, you know, something should be honored about hit and run victims. I wasn't here for that today, but just hearing that, it made me upset. Because not just here in Chester, but everywhere. I'm starting to see, since my baby got hit, I'm just starting to see the, the, the really, the real side of what is happening to our babies. It's not adults that's getting hit, it's children. And there's a lot of children that are being hit and nothing is happening. Nothing at all is happening. Since my baby been this way for the last seven and a half months, I have seen a two-year-old kid hit by two cars at the same time. Two years old. Nobody even heard about it. A little girl got hit by a car. Thank God, she's okay. She got hit, and the only thing happened was her jaw was dislocated. The little two-year-old little boy, he got hit by a car. Mom trying to put him in a car. One car hit him, car came behind and hit him again. So he got hit double time. Nothing happened. Nothing is happening to these people that's doing this hit and run. That no, and no, no, once is, once the child is okay, then it's all forgot about. Is nothing being put in play about hit and runs. There's plenty of people that I didn't talk to that kids died. You know, there's a woman that I talked to right now. Her son, the day my son came home, is the day 11 years ago that her son got hit by a car. And the person is home from jail. Her son is dead. That should not be happening. Like, her son is dead, but he still get to be out here on the streets. Everybody have a question, is Caleb Campbell out of jail? No, he's not out of jail. But he's not trying to show his face in court. He know what he did is wrong. Everybody that's hitting these kids, they need to know what they doing is wrong. They should not be just still out here. A force should be taken in action. Like, that should be something that's being in play. Kids are losing their lives. Kids' lives are changing. My son, thank God that he is still here. But what good is it that he here? He can't play with his friends. We do stuff, he's not happy. He's not a happy kid. Sometimes he happy, but majority of his life, he sad. He don't wanna come outside because it's people that he see that he used to play with that he can't even play with no more. When my son come outside, I'm a good mom, so I make sure he don't have to go to the hospital. But when he come outside, his oxygen level go low. Like, his anxiety go so high, it, it, it do something to his, his breathing. When we was out here at the festival, I didn't even get a chance to see the performance because I had to leave early because my son, yes!
10 seconds.
Okay, I apologize, but again, we need help out here. Like, for these kids. These kids need more help. Not saying forget the adults, but these kids need more help, especially with these car accidents.
Thank you. Victor. Victor? What's your last name, sir?
DeBra.
DeBra, okay.
Uh, good morning, Mayor Roots and City Council and Public. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. Uh, my name is Victor. I work with Four Circles Beyond, which is a nonprofit located over at 2100 Providence Avenue. And I was here a few weeks ago with a group of amazing youth that I've been working with who were presenting on what they learned this summer. Since then, we got the opportunity to go to the Delco Department of Health and also share there about their experiences. And on October 5th, from 3 to 6, at Chester's Friends Meeting, we're gonna be having a community sharing celebration where we'll, we'll show footage of the trip that's being edited as we speak. The kids are gonna share their art, whether it's poetry, whether it's the art that they created while we were on the trip. And then just have some community conversations around what they've learned and how they can apply that moving forward to making Chester the community that they wanna see, see it be. And so I'm up here today to invite the general community to pack the house for the kids. I just really wanna show them, you know, support and, and also to invite you all to that celebration. And so, yeah, with that, I have some flyers. I don't know if you'd like me to share with, share now or wait till afterwards to share with you.
You just leave them up here, and anyone who wants to grab them can grab one. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm just grabbing off right now. Thank you.
You can put them out on the table.
Yeah, so I, I did put some out there.
Okay, good.
And yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate it. And if you have any questions or wanna know more, I'll be around. Thank you.
I tell you, last time you were up here with the kids, we was all up here crying, but we wasn't showing it. That was so heartwarming. Thank you for what you do. Ms. Dennis.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
And Chester residents. I'm here today, well, first of all, I wanted to ask about R 105 that talked about epoxy flooring. I thought the facade was for the outside. I was just wondering what the flooring in the inside of the building had to do with the facade. Okay? It just didn't seem to click for me.
Stop right there.
Yes.
Give, give us a quick answer, sir, since you're here. Get to the mic, you gotta get to the mic, though.
Yes.
I would imagine it's in the foyer, but would love to hear this answer, too.
Good morning. So it is actually, so we're replacing the storefront, but right behind the storefront, the flooring is actually tied into that whole storefront system. So it's gonna affect that portion in the lobby as well.
Thanks.
So because there's a lobby, that's the reason?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. I just couldn't get that together with that. Okay, my other is, I haven't been here in a while talking about the weigh station. So now I'm here to talk about it again. I just wanted an update on what's happening with the weigh station.
Okay.
Okay?
So I'm sure the weigh station you're talking about is the station on Third Street that would weigh trucks?
Yes.
All right. Is our commissioner here? Come on up. As she's coming up, I will say that repairs have been made to the scale. And we've assessed what repairs have to be made to the building itself in order to safely occupy officers. And I think what she's going to say has something to do with manpower.
No.
Okay, see?
The gist of it is the repairs, the manpower, officers have been trained. Yeah, officers are already trained. So we're just, it's right now, just boils down to the repairs to the weigh station and then making it safe for officers to actually go in and out of this weigh station.
So explain to us what, one of the things I learned is we're one of the few municipalities that has a weigh station. And the scale that we have is better than most in the types of weigh stations that are out there. But what does the weigh station bring us? Well, beside, beside potential fees and...
Besides that, it's been like a running joke through the county since we don't have our weigh station up, that you can come through Chester with your loads overloaded and just not following the rules of what you're supposed to do if you're operating commercial vehicles and those large trucks. It would bring, definitely bring resources, but it would make our, especially the strip of 291, safe. Because we're just missing the bar. We're just not getting it done. We don't have the officers right now since we don't have the weigh station up. Officers can't really concentrate on addressing those issues that come up in down 291 or the trucks that park too early in the morning when they're not supposed to, and things of that nature. But the weigh station would definitely be a great resource. And again, it just boils down to the repairs that need to be done to safely work inside the weigh station. It's been unoccupied for years. You're talking about mold, mildew, some electrical work. And there's a lot of repairs that needs to be done.
All right. This is not an intent to go down the rabbit hole of weigh stations, but you're talking about trucks coming through the city of Chester. Now, we all know that these trucks did not load or originate in the city of Chester, and they're not going to unload or terminate in the city of Chester. They go through many towns before they get here, and they're gonna go through many towns after they leave Chester. So why is it so important for Chester to have a weigh station? Are we doing the work for many surrounding municipalities that, that don't have them? What, what's our contribution here? Why should we be so concerned about having a weigh station working here in Chester?
Well...
When you don't have one in Marcus Hook or Trainer or, you know, every other town between where the truck left and where the truck is going to end up?
Well, more than anything, it is about the resource, the money that can come in from the citations that are written, the violations. I'm not gonna stand here like this is my area expertise. Had I known, I'd have bought an officer who worked this detail for years, and he could tell you everything about the citations, what's the importance, and how it should be properly done.
That's fair. And we do have some experts. I've sat with these guys. They really know weigh stations. So let's make it a point to have a presentation from, from those guys so we can better understand as a community what impact this weigh station has. And the point I wanted to make real broadly is that the presence of a weigh station here is not just for Chester. It's for, you know, Delaware County by and large. But there's some trucks that are running up and down the road with, with stuff that they shouldn't have. They're too heavy, they're not in good shape.
I thought they weren't supposed to go on 9th Street because I watched them daily go up and down 9th Street.
No, a truck can...
And I had one of those big trucks, the trailer crash trucks, come down Upland Street.
Yeah, there's nothing prevent trucks from going up and down 9th Street. It's a, it's a state highway. There's some signs that direct them to 291. That's where we prefer them to go.
Here's the reason they must stop and then truck, trailers from going down 9th Street unless they have business in the city of Chester.
Well, I don't know what happened years ago, but it is a state highway. They do go up and down 9th Street. There's nothing preventing trucks from going down.
Um, what I would like to know...
I'm sorry, just let me just...
I was asking, you mean when it was...
I, I hear you, ma'am. I hear you. We've put up signage on each end of town to try to direct the trucks to not use 9th Street, to go down to 291, to go through the city. That's, you know, what we can do. But there's no signs. If they did it several years ago, whenever you heard this, you know, I've never seen that sign on any end of 9th Street that says, "Do not enter truck." And if it was forbidden for a truck to go down 9th Street, there would be some signage. Councilman, I'm sorry.
Um, have we allocated any money or put this on the Capitol? Um, have we allocated any money or put this on the capital, uh, improvement list or, um, any kind of funding have we looked at to get this up and running? And if so, do we have a timeline on when these improvements will be done?
The cost, both for the personnel side of things, 'cause you'd need additional staffing in the police department, as well as the repairs, were not incorporated in the twenty-twenty-five budget. So that money has not been allocated for this year. Something we can look at for next year, but there's a lot of factors that go into that, 'cause you need additional personnel in the police department. There is significant renovations that need to take place. It's something that's on the radar screen, obviously, but it's, it's an allocation issue.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pauline King? There she is. Ms. King, you get the award for being first at council this morning.
Hello, everyone. Um, I live on Lindsey Street in Chester. I have a couple of things I wanted to talk about. I think we need some speed bumps coming through that park. They're coming through there too fast. Everybody knows that. It's a main artery for people coming through from Brookhaven Park Side coming through. Um, we're, we really have just been fortunate. No one has gotten hit or hurt, 'cause that's where the babies hang out at. Um, I'm listening to you. Uh, I had already called over yesterday about another trash can for my neighbor. They kinda keep their trash in the house, 'cause they only have one. Um, yeah, they do. Um, because they don't want the dogs to tear it up. Um, so I really was calling over about them, 'cause I live next to them. And, uh, another thing was, uh, you said something about we're getting someone new, so we'll wait with new trash cans, 'cause we don't have any at all, right? That they can get one, correct? Sir Anthony?
I don't understand your question.
Well, we need enough, we need more trash cans for the neighbors. Because trash, they leave in their house, so it doesn't get on the street.
You need more than the one that was allocated to?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
When you have a family that has more than one or two people, yeah, you do, really. Um, and another thing, I'm sure you're gonna say, you can't do it, but I'm just gonna throw it out there.
Please do.
Uh-huh. Um, you know, like, the lights that we had put in, the LED lights?
Mm-hmm.
They're not strong enough. It's just to say we did something, but we didn't do enough. Because, and if you have a situation and someone's trying to get away or whatever and the police come by, can we look at your camera? Can we this, can we that? Okay. If you had better lighting, maybe we can put additional LED with the, the, uh, what'd you say, the harness or the, whatever you wanna call it up there. Uh, maybe we'll be able to see. I can't, you can't help no one if you can't see anything. So I think we really did that thing about putting up, changing out the old lights. It was nice, but we need to update it. It's too dark. Really is. Now, another thing, the li, uh, the trees. You might say, "Oh, well, that's for the homeowners." Well, you gotta help us out here now. We might have to allocate some money that we can trim these back. Anytime the trees are growing all the way across to the next side, we got a problem. I know you can't answer it now, but maybe we can think about it. All right? Thank you.
You're welcome. Speed bumps is the, uh, world of public works. We have installed some speed bumps recently. There's a lot that goes into putting speed bumps in legally. LED lights, um, you're the first person that says they're not bright enough. Most people complain, especially if they have one of those lights in front of their bedroom, if you will, that they're too bright. But I will also say that I've seen, even in my own neighborhood, where the full LED light is not fully illuminating. So it's sort of a two-part to it. So one part might be very dim, where the other one is performing like it should, and that will create a darker area. Overall, on average, the city streets are a lot brighter with the replacement of LEDs over the, replacement of the incandescent lights over the LED lights. I will also say that the LED lights are a headache for us, because they're nowhere near as reliable as the old incandescent lights are. They're more likely to go out, and I'm so happy we're getting a bucket truck here real soon, so we can go and fix them when we need to repair them, as opposed to having a contractor come out. But, um, you know, let, let us know the specific light that you're talking about and we can make sure that the light that's in there is as bright as it can be. Because I think if it's as bright as it can be, it's gonna be plenty bright for what you're talking about. And that guy right there, raise your hand. He's the guy to talk to after the meeting. He'll make sure that happens for you. But, yeah, I've heard a lot more complaints about people saying, "It's too bright." Not that they are complaining about it, but the, it's more of a matter of noticing just how much brighter those lights are and they gotta pull their shade down at night. And tree trimming, yeah, it's an old city. There's a lot of trees that are, you know, on our sidewalks that we're responsible for, like at the curb line. Um, no, there's not a lot that we're responsible for. They're, they're a responsibility of, of the neighbors. And, you know, it's an old city. Trees are old. You know, you come and you buy a house and the tree's already thirty, forty years old. It, it, it really is a burden. If the neighbor's tree leaves, branches start falling on your side of the yard, it's your responsibility to cut it. It really becomes a civil issue between you and the neighbor. But I'm not lost on the fact of what you said. People around here do need help. We had applied for a grant last year, which would have given us resources to do a lot of this tree trimming, and we didn't get the grant. It was really disappointing to not get it. I don't see another bite at that apple, uh, before me right now to, to handle that. Ms. Livia Smith constantly comes to us about trees that are in our parks, that are old, that are sick, that have branches that are, are compromising anyone who would walk under them. And, uh, I don't know if you guys saw this story. It was probably two, three months ago. A group of guys are playing dominoes under a tree in Fairmount Park and a big branch just came and, uh, I think killed one and, and, and injured others. I mean, trees do get sick and you never know when they're gonna come down. It's... And they're really expensive. Like, if you were to cut a big tree down, that's a five thousand, six thousand dollar expense. And Kim is like, "More, more."
You could negotiate a contract and instead of naming how much they, we could tell them what we wanna spend. And see, the same way you did that trash. You can't put it out there and see how many people we can get to get a better contract than we can implement this with, see, with these trees in a residential area.
So what she was asking, could we contract the company to come out and do tree trimming? We don't currently have a contract for that, so, um, you know, and again, as the Chief of Staff said, that's an allocation that we, uh, haven't budgeted for in the past. And in our current fiscal situation, it, it would be really tough to add anything on. So that's why grant opportunities, you know, talking with our Shade Tree Commission, because that's all they do, or, or look at the trees in the city, to be very careful about what trees we plant new, so we don't have, you know, this issue down the line, are all strategies for this. But, um, I don't wanna dismiss the fact that trees are an issue and, and we do, we do understand that. Do you wanna make a comment? Come up to the mic.
Can we-
You have to get to the mic. Please come to the mic, 'cause the people at home can't hear you. That's, that's the only-
About the trees, 'cause, um, there are a lot of trees growing and trees are falling. I was wondering if we can appeal to the tree company that's in Chester, making big money, to get put back into the city and help to cut, stem the trees back?
Yeah, that's not too much unlike what she's asking. I mean, we would have to engage in a contract with those guys, but-
Right, that's just my question.
We can make the ask. We can make the ask. We will make the ask.
We had got about three years ago, come through and cut all the trees, but nobody liked it likewise.
Yeah, so what Mr. Brown was talking about, there are companies that do, do tree trimming and they're usually hired by, um, the utility companies. So obviously, trees are a big issue. Let's, uh, let's have further discussions on trees only. We, I really can't read this.
Elizabeth Williams.
Elizabeth Williams? Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. And then after her, we're gonna have Mr. Saleem. So get ready, Mr. Saleem, you're up next.
Good morning, Mayor and Council.
Good morning.
How are you today?
Council lady.
Morning, how are you?
I, I have, um, a couple of questions I wanted, like, to present to you. Uh, did the receiver leave his report that he was supposed to leave here for the city? And if so, is it possible that we can get it? Or put it on, on those things, so we could see it? Now, when he was here, we had a hospital. He gone and the hospital gone. So what, what, what are we doing about Chester? What are we, we doing about Chester having a hospital? And, now I have a question for you, for Fatso the Baker. He not allowed back here in the city of Chester? I'm hearing on the street that he's not allowed back here in the city of Chester. Why is that? He, he, he's been here a very, very long time. This is history, history for him. So, so, so why is he not allowed back in our city? Okay. Now, I gotta, I got one. We have a golf course over there in Air, Air Park. Our young people could be using that to learn how to play golf. And I think that maybe that's something that parks and recreation need to look into, giving our young people that opportunity. And my other one is, I see all the building and stuff that's going on down on the waterfront. Could we get an amusement park? Thank you.
Come on up, Mr. Saleem. Uh, but let's address some of those. Uh, I think there was some discussion about- I think there was an ask to the receiver to do like a closeout report. I do not know the status of that. Uh, if you go over to Fatso's Bakery, you will see Rick Wilcox, the owner of Fatso's Bakery, putting, uh, pieces back together to reopen. Uh, Air Park, there was a driving range and we've been talking to, I've been talking to, uh, other, like First T and, and some other organizations. The group that's putting in the golf course in Cops Creek to see if they could get us a, a driving range here in the city of Chester. No takers yet, but it's, it's, it's pretty warm. They, they are open to it. But, uh, there, there, there no longer exists the driving range in Air Park. I would have loved to have got the netting that was taken down to put up somewhere else, but no one knew where the netting went. Yes, Council Lady Williams?
Mayor, do I mention your uniform?
I didn't even get to that one yet.
Do you want some traffic back, so in the city of Chester? Want some traffic completed in the city of Chester? We miss so many millions of dollars. We are, yes, yes, they would stop.
Oh, okay.
They would stop and the kids, you know, that's where your money is.
All right. So she certainly has a point. There's a lot of people who travel through Chester and we need attractions, so they could stop and spend some money here. Whether amusement park is the answer or not, that's, that, 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 it's the first time I've heard that as a recommendation, but... Mr. Saleem, the floor is yours. You're gonna close this out. Good to see you again.
Yes, sir. Good seeing you, Mayor, Council, yeah. Hi, um, yes, my name is Amina Abdul. This is Saleem. I live two forty past the street, maybe. I'm a little bit, uh, nervous today, but, you know, at this moment. 'Cause there's so much that we have to get into. Leave a lot of this stuff that we have to leave, that we think is good, but it's not good. So we want to get into the good. We want to certainly do what our Lord says for us to do. We want to follow our Lord here, not man. 'Cause man, every man, God says in his book, "Most men know not." So that's a reality. So we certainly, those who do know, certainly have to, if you will, uh, take charge of and put in, in, in the best way, follow the guidance. And God said that there would be a warning in every, every town. And the people hearts, the people's soul will be connected with that warning and they will be going. Mashallah. Yes, so let me get to my notes here. I, you have your brief note. Yes, uh, maybe I'm, I'm, I'm losing some time, 'cause I, I said that and may, maybe that's enough for us, but, um, there's so much that we have to say, you know? God said, uh, if, if you will, or we understand, uh, he said that they will become of you, uh, to partake in of a meal. Like, in Africa or in the east, they eat from a bowl and their hands, you know, they sit around the bowl and they partake in of the meal as they sit around the bowl. And these people, inshallah, I wanna put it in the best way, will come, we have to, God said this, if, if you will, sir. He said gradually. Now, that's one way. And why he said, he said gradually, gradually, to strengthen the heart, you know? So we was in a world, a, a order of lying and deception, if you will. And that weakens the heart. So we wanna do, our hearts are weakened, so I wanted to strengthen the heart gradually, doing what he said to do to strengthen the heart. But with this weak heart, they will run in and, and partake in, eat of us, like, you know, the eating of the meal and, and, you know, this is too much rush. Uh, it's just too much rush. And I was trying, I stayed away this last, uh, you know, council meeting, Mayor, and then you also. But anyway, so when they come in rushing, they do not have what's out front. We rush back with this that they're offering us, not going forward to what our Lord is saying gradually to go forward with. So inshallah, sir, uh, let me finish with, that's, the, God is in charge of all the faith, if you will. If you will, 'cause it's time that we speaking of God, and God in true sense, not all this other. So he says, uh, you know, we wanna probably get with, connect with our Lord and follow our Lord. That's the only way. This that they say about the violence in the city had curbed and they wanna give, the governor, that, that, that's superior, uh, he may imagine, oh, this is the, the, the police chief and the residents of the city. But man wants to, to give himself too much credit, never giving credit to our Lord. Sir, I thank you very much and thank you.
All right, thank you. And thank you to all who were in attendance today. You know, with regard to public comment, I'm gonna state again, this is a public comment, period. Public comment, public comment, comment, comment. Uh, there's issues that are often times brought up in public comment that would be better, uh, addressed with our directors.
Excuse me, Mayor. I don't mean to cut you off, but we're having a conversation in the back.
Thank you. So you don't have to wait to public comment to come up here and express yourself, share your concerns. On that wall over there are the directors of each department that would represent most, if not all, the concerns. You can call six-ten-four-four-seven-seventy-seven-hundred. The new phone system has a menu that directs you right to those departments. That's number one. Uh, this is an impossible place to do question and answer. If it's a, if it's a, if it's a question that could garner a short answer, then you'll get it like you heard today. This is not the place for long discussions. This is, it, it, it just doesn't work. I have office hours that are scheduled through my special assistant. I'm sure the council members would entertain your questions or concerns in the offices that are provided for them here in City Hall or even out there in the community, if you need to meet out there. So I just say that to say, public comment is public comment. Mr. Saleem just is chomping at the bit here for one- Mr. Saleem just is chomping at the bit here for one more thing.
Yes, sir. Very sorry. I, you know, like I said, sir, there's so much to be said and we're just, you know, picking at a little stuff, you know, we just doing, but suddenly we want to get to what our Lord wants to do and, you know, not say our Lord in every voice, but just, I don't know, we are, I heard E-Mat said that, you know, we are people of faith and that's what we have to do. We have to keep the faith of for others.
I'm going to throw this gavel at you is what I'm going to do.
Yes, sir. Allah, so there's something, I have a lady with a child. Maybe her child is a meter of what we're doing in the city because he can feel, children can feel, you know? So just tell him that sister, if you will, just tell him that he got good people for him, for him, he got good strong Muslims.
That's good word.
Thank you. Thank you, City of Chester. Those of you viewing, those of you here, can I get a motion to adjourn?
Wait a minute. I have something to say.
Oh, okay.
Over the weekend, over this past weekend, there was an incident that took place in Wilmington with one of our local football teams. It was the Upland Hurricane and most of those children come from Chester. And so while the shooting had taken place, the children lost their equipment. And so I'm asking if there's anyone here that could assist the children with a donation to get their helmets, their equipments. These children have been traumatized by the shooting that had took place right in front of them. And we as a community, I know that when we hit a rough patch, we come together and we're fortified. And so I'm just asking that if there's anyone here that can donate to the Upland Hurricane team that they do so. They do have a GoFundMe page that's up and you can find it at Donate to Help Upland Hurricanes Replace Their Equipment. There's also a Cash App being made at dollar sign, C-E-D-E-S zero one. And keep those children in constant prayer because that's something that they're going to remember for the rest of their lives. They've been highly impacted. The Cash App again is the dollar sign, capital C, lowercase letters, E-D-E-S zero one. And Mr. Burton is their coach. I spoke with him on this morning and I just believe we can come together and do something for those children. Thank you.
No, thank you. I was not aware. Anything else, Council? I'm sorry, I didn't give you an opportunity.
My grandson plays for Upland Hurricanes and he was there. Witnessed it and, yeah, Mr. Brown, I mentioned that the first award was for Wilmington that happened, that doesn't make it any lighter, but what I do want to say is it was really sad for him to come in the house and say that they didn't have their game because someone got shot and killed in front of us. And it was like a normal sentence. It wasn't, he said all his teammates were crying and it was like normal. The way he spoke of it was like more shooting, like he's used to it. And I just wanted to say pray for those kids because they had practiced yesterday and they tried to practice the day before and the kids are traumatized.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, they're really upset and some kids are laughing because some of the kids are upset, you know, because kids are used to it. So this is the state of our city and no matter, no matter if it's a kid, no matter if it's an adult, it affects us all.
Yes.
And we need to talk to our kids about these situations and that it shouldn't be normal, you know, help them because they're grieving.
Yes. Do they, have they had someone, a grief counselor?
No, they literally had the coaches just talking to them and letting the kids speak, you know, about what's going on. But yeah, that is something that we did.
Dr. Motley?
I'm already...
Okay, thank you. Because they need it.
Yeah, we talked to Skip about it and I didn't have direction that I was going to talk to him. So someone reached out to me and I talked to Dr. Motley and he referenced me and making sure that he can, so the community does reach out and a lot of times, sometimes when we speak to each other, we can do better in terms of being able to show support. And so they're reaching out and they're wanting to, they shouldn't take a bunch of moments to support them tonight.
Thank you. Anything else from Council? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Meeting adjourned.